We're in the middle of starting the year, welcome to South Miami for one first. This is new media and so far, staying for a while in the lead. What are the reasons to apply from the United States of America? Just to create some questions to ask, why I'm actually under that, you know, this all, we're trying to be concrete. We have a couple of programs for guys that are on the agenda. So kind of business, uh, famous, uh, complaints, uh, in point two thousand point five. You just like five hundred and fifty minutes?
Yes, yeah.
It's okay, we'll leave it.
It is.
Two words, uh. You have a problem.
The one thing I do wanna bring up and see if this is something that we wanna do is for Black Mountain, their annual contract is up. One of the modules that we use is cemetery. Well, one of the modules that we pay for is the cemetery. It has not been used since I've been here. Shara never used it or very, very rarely. I think when we got it, um, crazy input, all the information to get it started, but it was never utilized after that. It's fourteen hundred and three dollars, no thirty, fourteen hundred and thirty dollars a year that I think we could utilize elsewhere. So I do have that as a separate check in this round so that if we want to cancel that for this next cycle, we can. And I've already talked to Black Mountain about it.
Uh, where are you? What about the cremation? Or was there?
I don't think it's something separate. But I mean.
Is we have to try and get all our cemetery stuff consolidated? Is there a separate?
Yeah, Stacy, there's chairs for, reuse that one.
Still the little chair. Was there, was there some program that Sharon put entering and stuff spreadsheet or?
I think it's probably just a spreadsheet. I don't think she has a, I don't think there's another program. I think she just has a spreadsheet that. I think there's a manual one and I think she might have one on her computer as well.
Let's double check for Shara, I think we're nine, five, um, how the system was placed because there was a few years ago, so it's very much.
Yes, yes.
Lots of tracking and stuff. There's more than a hundred years.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Other than that, it's not a new net, you should tell that, you know, the fires Monday. If we got reimbursed for the water to the old panel?
We have not. And we have been reimbursed for all of those rebates from BPA. Yeah, we get a process, processing G F that, yeah.
Um, question, please?
Yes, yes.
Why we got those? The one working? Any questions?
Mm-hmm.
This is five. I don't know what I'm. Five, five, six, four, five. Uh, so the road to there certain, uh, in the plan were twenty first, two thousand twenty five.
You're looking at the second place?
The second. All right. Uh, do you, do you emphasize with all? I don't know what that is. It didn't give you pressure, so. So, uh, it's all over by itself, I really know the picture, that I didn't out of all, my kids, and I come home from the service. And, uh, there's a small, uh, uh, pictures, uh, cheap, uh, and that is, uh, the main, there was, I mean, everything like, uh, uh, meaning not only the boy, uh, uh, yeah. Any questions? You're trying to, well, uh, for the most thing here, certainly, but I think for all areas. Uh, new business license for feet, the feet monitor, open, uh, speed. So who can just actually velocity in the home, uh, P P P. We are fairly operating and all this must have passed for my, 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 my goal. And others, uh, it's like this, uh, we, not there, why this, the next, uh, we have to, we, we need to help, obviously, but, uh, we want to, as they can actually, we would try to give them, uh, this movie, uh, the, 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 uh. No, the name is. Uh, for most, there's certainly also there's a fee, fee monitor.
Oh, my motion to accept this license. I think you keep wanting.
No, sorry. Okay. And the ID card, uh, we do the license license. And I'm. Mm-hmm.
Yes, that one, um, I was thinking she had skipped the March one and would do it this time, but no. She came in like the day after we did the March meeting and so she wasn't able to come to this one, so we do have her scheduled for, um, May. Yes.
I'll ask for relation to the. You know. Know the table in the size, uh. You know, whole, uh, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. You know what I'm saying? We don't have that. Uh, for the table, I'm in trouble in place. No, second. We need to, uh, send judge others' interest, you know. You know, if you want, three different years today, uh, three, two, three, and then, and then, and then all. While I will wait last night, we'll get out some very good experience and we will hopefully interview at six o'clock, and then we'll, um, um, three murder candidates, three. I think more than capable, I mean, all we do is there would be a couple of. No, the patterns and the way they present themselves and is one person a little bit more advantage as you follow up, uh, which is references, uh, two out of four will be talking about, and do very good. References to his work at Baker's Been Here, and he's, he's, he's become a poor person, and he's, uh, lost his experience over Washington. And, um, they all had more than good things to say, uh, and things that we make that also in the new year. And so, all those other handles, you decided that he was on the team with it, or you showed him that you wanted. To stand on that a little bit, but, uh, your head is a little bit.
So, yeah, I do, let me stand out, but they were awful. You know, it's, it's, it's.
Yes, we, um, you can, uh, so, uh, you know, I mean, that, I do. Well, I heard of, you know, uh, and then from third, and it's probably the town, it's, uh, like, all in the town, and she's, what are the reasons? I mean, the task for motion to, uh, Steve Parker, for the position of the judge, for the handful, and.
All of you know, it's, it's like two places, they, that.
No, second. And all of them. Now, we call, you know, and we're still gonna probably read the laws and find out, uh, so, so, uh, given sort of the way that you know, it's possible. It's insane, well, uh, unfortunately, even judge's training started today and now left, uh, people gonna make that call. But talking of Robin was here, Robin was here, Magic was here, basically, so we're just, you know. Yes, we did explain that, that part of that, that was, I didn't want to be something that. So, I'm just, uh, just, uh, uh. Really? Uh, moving on, another very sensitive subject in our community is the county town location control. Uh, last week I had an email from Kathy Cooper, that somebody did that, and cut the lock on the backside of the gate, got in, scattered, um, the green cans and made a huge mess, and it was probably mess off, and we're half the green cans out there. Unfortunately, our cameras just sometimes miss you, it's, it's always dinner right down there. Um, and, and one of them, we're making on Facebook, and, uh, situation with all the green cans and everything, but it is a county location, it's county side, um, Kathy did ask that we develop control a little more, and, um, and go by at night, and boxers, spotlight a little bit, just to see, um, if they can catch something in there at night. And unfortunately, they cut more locks again last night, and people were in there, um, they did, they asked, but they did cut the locks, uh, unfortunately, they won't be able to get a lot of the gas, and it's all, but, um, so I can, Jim, and, um, following, you know, starting to make a transition plan to move those, move those, and get them out of city owners' control. And, um, following, looking to do that, following by default sometime. You got it? Uh, still a little bit, probably, we need to do some prep out there, but I guess one of the things is that the doctors, the kids. Just pointing down here, a little bit more consistent hours, um, and then it'll probably be a little harder for them to establish, uh, maybe, you know, you, you, you.
There are a lot of issues. Unless anybody, it didn't, it never really process. There's any maintenance to the law regulations. Do that like uh. Yes, yeah. And that's just how we do it. You can bring in that certain. But I just wanted to be the director. To do that. We got with uh. Maybe especially with the. Right. Have to bring it regularly to that. Yeah, I want to be. But this, yeah, well, the. If you have an all. Well, it's like. And really, uh. This is something that was supported by the folks already. We, uh, we kind of accounted this and uh. I don't know the exact code, but it was a lot of time to. Review the flow mapping for the whole county, but it has a dozen cent. You know, your paper, you know, your paper maps, you know, the scales, you know, it's not. Every time it has a new show. Other drawer, counties, so it's smart coming in or if you wanna go look up. What about uh, there's no computer to remove the maps, so it didn't. So we were just informed of that. It does sound like you're going to come through. I don't expect that work to stop. Uh, but it's all together. The promise that you were pressed of, you must also have done, but. But I should have found out about it, but really, it was all data. For us. Do you believe in what I'm talking about? You want to add to that, go with that. Yeah, but that's six hundred one six mile a lot. You can like. You think, you think about it, you know, those. Bottom of the heap around for it, yeah, I mean, pretty. Pretty charity. That's a family.
Okay. So that's what I was about to, uh, tell you. Probably more than, uh, I knew it.
Well, I think I know. You know, first step.
Well, good. Any minute, um. Any questions? And so, uh. Five o'clock two minutes ago, we had very platform. Uh, so we're trying to see if the fire plan during construction, including all the new construction. Hopefully. To getting rid of this, but it's temporary, so it's. We closed the section, uh, written application. For us in course that's used. Um, we thought about having somewhat of a form put in place for here, it's basically was. Stacey put something together for us when they actually got. An application for this. Assuming we're just. We vote to accept this form as part of our policy.
Yeah, so that's why I put it in here and uh. I just wanted to make sure, um. I don't know that we've necessarily followed the MCA for this because I think some of them. That we have voted to allow variances were not. Situations where they were building houses or remodel. Yeah, and we never have collected any funds. Hmm, that's right.
Yeah, that's uh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Uh, that's like, uh, certainly situations around the city. Of people. When they're following. One of the means of other situations that they have allowed. Any situations in Detroit? Yeah, we said, or last week, yeah, so. Like, um, I think the rest of this is because of people. Don't like this, well, just. So, because of that, so. So, yes, we. Not necessarily following all the, all the, all the, all the in the past, and then. We've had a few. Uh, people have a question, like, you know, like, you're very, you know, like. They just said, like, admitted for our murders. You know. You know. But I will ask the council for, uh, accept the petition for a very true request as part of our policies and the ordinance. Um, prior to part of our policy. Not the ordinance.
So, I like. Our reason. Our, our.
For stores now. No, stores is a.
Well, I think, yeah. So, if I understand this correctly, the variance is. It's basically, you know. A gallery is my dream model. Definitely.
Yes.
Well, that's reparted up. Not to be that poor, but. Really fair.
You have a question. People, you know, how do you, what do you say?
No. Two or one.
Two or one.
One. Exactly.
On the beach in our own park. So, this is our signal. That we're having. An application for us, so that way we can actually. Rather than somebody remembering that, oh, hey, there's a variance, they're paying for the, you know, two or two. Paying for that, we should report it, you know, uh. And sending it off on, um. It's a potential electrician for us to.
So, you know, there's variance in there. I think it's like, not maybe.
We have not been followed. In the last, uh, couple of weeks.
Question?
I don't, I don't.
Okay, sorry.
The guy just, you know. So, if that's something, you know, they may have, uh, since we was all thirty, yeah.
I'm not. The miracle must be that the city bars were in the. Inside, you told me that.
The banner, you know, of the, he was only around, he's always standing for that, seeing the person playing with. The, uh, well, so.
I was, um. Last year, there. I thought I got one.
Is there the same from? Office at the same time. Really, you know. I mean, it's not, you have a word that, like, we have some stuff to us. You know, yeah, we start, you know, so presented, and we have. Insurer, you know. Each day. You know, just. All patients too close to, that's something. Part of, you know, we kind of sign off on it, you're also. Too close to maybe instructor, now maybe a fire hazard, you know, some, around that, like, fire. And that all.
Basically, what I asked was to write up what was this what involved. So, um. It was a fire code, a fire danger that would, anything that would. Moving on is. Saying by the time it's. And so.
This is a request that's, uh. You know, it's on the radio.
It's on the radio, and just, you know. You know, the picture of obvious, I'm just, oh, yeah, yeah, let me go back and read the noise. And like that. And then, then this permit is well, and then. Um, extension, and then they kind of, you can obviously, you know, there. Anything like that.
Maybe, but it's far worse, they were, they were able to connect to the water. So, yes, yeah, so again.
And then our orders, the miracle must be that the water is through. And probably going to the entire state. And then I put it solar, even though it's. There's no, no, there's no, yeah.
Uh, so this is what we're, what I heard today, I kind of forgot how I can come up with some advice. What they can, what they can. People could be. Um. I'm completely on my head on those projects. If there's anyone who might. I hired an excavator. Um, starting the process of connecting water and city sewer. I've already had a, a lot of electricity hooked up. It's booked out a year at least. Uh. So, I'm just curious, is this where this is gonna hook me in, if we can have a discussion, probably. You know, willing to accomplish that, because. Quite specifically with electricity, that's gonna be. Part of.
Ele- electricity, we understand that it's not a tax case, so it was, it's been done, it's a transformer, sometimes things like that.
Right.
But at some point. You better for your most now.
Um, all right, yeah.
You better, um. So. In reality, the situation, you're gonna have to play that application. Off, we, we saw, of that, so we can't tell you. Since you don't have the application, then I don't know. So, we can do it from the process.
So, what, what are the steps, or once you guys wrote in this application, you go with that, bring it in, you'll see.
Yeah, that'll be our next one, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Well, okay, there.
Uh, maybe talk with me, but, or the, because the one situation that we got. Particularly in town on. And, and even with the same, basically, information session. The property owner is, is, you know, the ownership contract, really. It's not a property owner. You're letting somebody who are, you know, the property. Or, I'm sorry. Or the property owner. Then everybody for. I'll ask for, and also the application for the very first one.
I was the one saying, except that. Have chosen for various requests one.
That's right. All right. Very, very, very. All, uh, the non-parents. Uh, moving on to all business. Um, which part of project? The whole, do you have any? Any reasons in the state or?
No, I haven't. I haven't had anything, so.
I don't have any. No taxes, I don't have. Um. More of the reduced community, yeah.
Basically, like, I think you were sort of. You know, they, they know about, oh, they're going, it's our structure, they're happy, they're, the structure is. They're not speaking, they're unhappy, what they're unhappy about. They have that. They're not really. You know, it's kind of.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Stay away from it.
Oh, it's cool.
It's like, in the first. Basically, uh, two, four hundred and four. They're really male, and that's just the first. You know, they all, they don't believe that they're, you know, they're, they're kind of questioning, you know, that's just. You wanna know, you get on, there's certainly. But so far, what we're arguing is. It's a, I mean, you. On it. You know, it's very important, I have made fun of it. Yeah.
Anyone who's figured on, what, well, you know, you know. Figured on Facebook, you know. Just like, you know, you use the dial or any. But, it's, I could, I don't actually know, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, it's been obvious for, for, you know, that's a, you know. Okay, I'll have to. Nothing, we're gonna need. But honestly, I have access to. About only whatever, so.
Hmm. You know. Any questions on what I'm wondering? You know, but my, how many you can.
Yes, and so we had a first. You know, I'm gonna have to continue. Do it to. Yeah, I learned very well, um, there was a lot. Lot more questions than than answers, you know, a lot of friends saw it. Uh, a lot of folks, so, you know, maybe just trying to assess those. You know. What, you know, the council's, you know, really, want that, but, you know. When I brought up that, you know, the cat pass, we've looked at. Was brought over, like, beer, come on, you went off to the clever sites, town on. And it was very, very, uh, nasty, busting busting other, other problems, just around, um. And everybody's new group side, I think it was, yeah. So, different. You know, skill set, we didn't, they were, uh, so we got, well, we, everybody got a little, a sign. We were looking at, uh, was there, finding sources. To make these movies, so, it's so very work, it's, there's so many, you know. But, uh, we've been, uh, set along with this, um, uh, funding grants, fifty thousand dollars. Like, uh, just through some, very untouchable, you know.
Hmm.
And we kind of looked at, you know, you know. You know, that's up there, okay, we could, you know. Essentially, maybe, let's say, you could, true, except for, self adversity. Maybe more of that, maybe do something where you do a design now, then you can use that same design. That is, that's a lot of location. This is kind of, okay, good one, right? So, anyway, you just do one time, go around, if you're there. Uh, the customer asked about the, the product, you know. Kind of a one day only. Well, I see.
Hmm, I don't, I, 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 I think, it was, there. Is it all, it's something like, two, three, one. Impact is there. Uh, and then. There's still, like, straight back on the bull line, parking lot, you got, oh. You know, you're, you're, you're going off, and he's on a, on a, on a side. Then it's not just, you know, it's, you know, city, you know, physical, lines, how, why, what, you know.
That was asking, so, I was sort of, really, really, what else, Rob, was that? Secret, yeah, and then, you know, then, there's also some residents asked, uh, about. Uh, um, so you go, add your grounds, if there's more, telling us. You know, they, 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 uh, this, this, their flat, their, uh, this, this Jason, this city. Uh, you know, like, we're just, far, and it's at the same elevation, that's the base, so. My opinion out there, uh, one or two, two of those two. So, certainly, we're just in class, very little challenge. But, again, if you guys can kind of face faster out there, you know. It's not as good, it's like, okay, maybe, they're wanting to learn, but then, maybe, you know, you have someone. You know, and has, somebody who is, you know, they're, you know, they're, I don't know, some, for, for, and others, for the next.
Hmm.
You know, so, but it'll, I mean, kind of set up, there, if, well. Make sure, not, or.
No.
Yeah, you know, that's the name, so, just, you know, we, we, we. I'm probably, this, this, uh. Usually, but, you know, as far as, like, um, I mean. The land part in the one. Again, it's perhaps, you know, water issues, all kind of, you know, total, well, and so, it's, uh, to these, uh, these. It's, 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 you know, the process. Literally, the, 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 so, um.
Few days now and there's that. We're just gonna do it. Very, very, very. Everybody. You know what? They're trying to. There's some.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Of course. We were still thinking about that one also years ago. I can't remember what. That one or there was just. Whatever. That one. A lot of classes. We've got a lot. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
We've, yeah, we have pockets so very. But I don't know whether they're, they're showing you, you know, the tactics. What is it really? You know, it's a piece of how can you respond to that? One of those things. So it's on us too. Probably see it out there. So like. Yeah, uh, so yeah, we're, we're reading that back up together. See what we can wild. And so it's for instance, other slides, you know, we, we need at least kind of even set me able to. We can have field long sign at the beginning scale. Using different occasions. But in truth, it's been, you know, we're done. But you have a time based product. And it's not here. And I guess. We didn't think about it. The view, uh, we're about our team. We can talk about this. Uh, last month and. And we got eight on that one. And my mom got a stadium. Remember you and. Everybody you were having. I'm scared. You promise to them. Or any part. When you feel like you're speaking. Yeah, so it was like that, that past. The house, but. Now it's great. Uh, but yeah, essentially that. Changes the way our remarks of you use your, uh, some of these. Do that same practice. And how we do this, uh, in the next three years. Uh, it was, it's like a word three by nine. Uh, process of the city is a lot of things. Uh, maybe one of the interesting, uh, vision. Uh, as a useless argument in a way. With the law. You thought some major, uh, I got a property law also there. But that. It was like. But that's more an interesting chance they made through that whole lot.
Hmm.
What?
I'm searching.
Well, uh, it's almost ten or.
He does now, right?
You know.
It depends.
Right. And. It was part of all of our turds and then how could you? So we're not allowed to do it long.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the, you know. You know, I just do. Yeah, this is one of the issues. Let me guess, yes, when you subcast, you forward. Pay the process. It's. That makes me. Mm-hmm. You want to have your question on that? What? Mm-hmm. Uh, I did contract with this year twenty four that is in my core. Oh, I thought looking for. You know, I'm trying to. Not for another one. You know. Uh, you might do department reports. Just really quick. If we ever even want to say on the side, if you want to have. That's what I'm saying, because of our options. And the questions. Would I say before I would?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, we like.
Thank you.
It's a good. Yeah, so I guess. First, I had a. Uh, you know, you're, you're. And I know. And the part you're saying that there was order. And most. You know, it's. We appreciate it. Um, yeah, it's good. Start off the city. Uh. The audience for thing up. There are a part of you. Uh, going for some. And. This is that you are, um, that's some. Pretty good for that. So. I'm not really going to talk about. Yeah, the new, so yeah, let's do so. You know, they move. Just. You know, you. That's not. We need more important. We're in the state park, uh. We put out in future and then. And they're drawing for the term. Spring handed on the side of the skate park and one guy went down. And that's the clear and got removed. And quite quickly, so we thank guys for that. And then there was some, I think, uh, fall forth. Um, I actually was like, when you scratch this and. Draw a forty term out there, so I'm not sure where the person can put that.
You're a candidate for. State.
So I, so I got out of skate park now. We, we talked about this in skate park and, and more than I thought more about that today. Was that new pump house? Didn't have that. And we actually have. And they went for it and we just did follow it. Really good. And I was waiting on.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'd like to see what we do. See here at the, um, I can just. Question. See what's.
Hmm.
All dark gray. There's a. Didn't necessarily say it was, but just. My work members up there. I don't know. I mean, top five of them. You know, it's. It's everything. I'll take it. Who tries to see? Who ready for that? What is it? From that, that's the way I'm in their pocket.
Mm-hmm.
So. If you. Maybe. Okay, that's okay. So that's moving on to. Time for any comments. Anything time wants to bring us. Or on the front. Mm-hmm. Then the part of that. So. More. If you do. What else? You want to start in the movie? Yeah, that's just. This may be the great, I don't know. Maybe it's how we do this. It's not about that. Everybody's like. And this is. Um, this is going to part, um, all that as you can, uh. You got some for a lot of requests. This is, you know, for. You got, uh, we can find it up. These will be what happened. Um. It's just. So we're about to do the, yeah, those, uh, so. One of the things we want to say is. I just thought. It's only the weather. It's challenging. But. And the stuff. Yeah. That's, that was. It was like. All this. We have to. This is. You're putting me back some on the. Some of the. I was like, I should have played. See. That's. They. I used to. You know. It's one thing. Baseball field and so we're about our real one. Our guys. On. You just wait for your mind. We did. There's a thing like that, and it's kind of. Going down the house and looking for more of this. This goes through the. You want. You know, above and beyond, like track the field, current field. Um, it's kind of around to do that. So our guys don't have to spend any time. So there's anything going on in spring. You. You know, make the field. Looking good, but unfortunately, you know. You didn't give it off there. Six hours last week and you're off really. At a time. We're all like, you know. You know, you, you look for a lot of people. And I know, well, you're worried about talking to guys, but I'm. Won't be open. Our guys think about that, but it's all really good stuff. Lower part of mine compared to the whole. Something's going on. What is it?
Hmm.
But some of it also. It's always a little bit of. Not really good guys. Because they talk. Parties. Um. But, uh. All they're on the wall. This time, Charlie, I would. So we do this. Costs. So. No, so we last time I hit this on a grid. But I don't. It's something really different. You know, we got, got the. Uh, so. Coming to Thursday and on a lot of weird. So Dan approached me, the gentleman here. Um, Dan came on and said, well, why haven't you just done? I said, because you were. Moving on. Uh, so. Because. And we got to do. And he said, well, super snow already there. So they didn't know. But I don't know. It's no question of him. That's all we do is just do it for. It's not a lot. It's not a game. If you were. It's okay. And I stayed with executive. So there, you mean, you're very good. And I think this is. So it just. And as all these years. So. And then they. Water. And this.
Yeah.
And that has started to. We start this after, um, Debbie. So. And that's what I'm looking at. Looked up, uh, my view of roads, uh, all of that projects. It's usually, um, all over us. They want me to go down this way. Possibly animals, they just go. Man. Um, you know, ghosters. Actually, we wanted to.
You get to. We didn't see it.
But I tried it. But no, it's. Warrior. And they just, I found that they wash the paper. Which are some of these. So you really. Remember that. We know that. The quarterly, we know it's often reported. So let's just. We. We like, uh. You want that. Yeah. Yeah, a little. And that's why it is. Uh. That's a good question. It's just going to be part of this. Our value. That I was waiting. That was a lot and you know. It's not all. So there's. Like. Yeah.
So.
So that's, that's why. The importance of stairs. So go over. And you got to appear though. Straight. So I think there's. You got to see the back. If you want. You just kind of have a couple of times. Try to best. So. So.
The city is good and then it's.
You know, still. That is. That's. So just, uh. This one a little bit more. Say. This sort of. Does that have a problem with you? If you can call it, I don't want you to. But if I'm a little under, maybe it could be turned out. That it. We're trying to. Yeah. I think we're a little lost. So maybe we can just make sure. The question. You can do it. It's a question. I just kind of learned the name. She's. And I was just making that. So. Is that a kind of word? So, so the other ask you that. And the. Historical. I don't know. The thing they call it. I think just by some city names I love. When we had the. Grand. Now, since. I think. It's. We think about. Yeah. So. So then. Spies out and said, very, uh. So we've been for a time and reason when both people. So. And. We turn the water off. It's. Whatever. Um. We've been just there. And last project. So there now, I should put up. It's still a little bit of a transfer. And it's just. You know, you. You're. You're. So instead of her lying, Dallas is fine. I don't know if they're good. Maybe we have someone's education. There's a lot of things. You know, fairness. Yes. Yeah. For the last year. So single was at the center and he started cleaning up. Part of it, and we're doing your. You heard this. What? And then. I'm there on our guys. You know. Yeah. Well. You kind of like. Yeah. You think about.
Yes.
You know. Uh, yeah. So. Uh, maybe it's. Next. Before. Yeah. Uh, we could have. So that would be really good. Apparently. Um. We still have that, uh, yeah. That's what we asked for. Uh, we're working on it. Set up for. For that. Hopefully for someone else. Um. So be your home. There's a couple of. I'm pretty happy with. And he did some figure out on, on, uh, on what he's got. What they're going to do. And, uh, we're trying to decide. You know, to work. You want to do that. So. Um. Which is, uh, we're. According to my task. Um, I'm trying to pick up this up. And it's. Um, the hospital works up, uh, for organized, uh. Trauma there is. I think. More of us. Those who. We can. We've got some very rare several years. And so, uh, except the, yeah, super topic. We do. We could ask for a friend. And it's. And so the topic you like asked for is probably gets in the high story. Um. We would have to do like that. Uh. Well, I sent back the food and, um, I think it's not on, on that. You know. So. Um, we're, we're good to go there. We're from. And both of us. But basically, there's pretty. Well, I mean, this is. And realizing. On. So. We're. This is. On the. Um, for all of service, uh, saw something that under uses. So it's. Well, this is all of us. Same practice. So we could compare this to. It is. What it is. This. It's all about. We can do. Uh. At some point in the, you know, we can do. Um. I'm actually very. Mm-hmm. Um, so we're here. My. We have a. Then. Okay. Maybe it's. And then, uh. And I maybe was. Please, the work. Sure. Or, uh, we're going to do this, this on the following. It's something kind of right there. It's kind of. I'm not going to care about that. Yeah. So evidently, why I made sure to, you know, you're going to do what you want. Maybe. To, you know, want to. You're for it right now, so. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Same. You know, the. This is. Uh, you know, sure. And it's. Well. You do. For the people. On very far. There's a. There's a lot. There's a lot. You know. All of you.
Um. Everybody probably knows that Sarah gave her notice, so her last day is May first. Um, we've got, I think it's four applications so far, but we've had a lot of. Calls and emails, so. Hopefully those start coming back in. Mm-hmm. We said it, uh, go through next. Um, Friday. For this Friday, sorry.
This Friday.
Yeah.
You're. You're. Thank you. Yeah. I'm. I saw it. Or.
Yeah.
You. You don't want to get it now. Yeah. I'm getting a little. Well, I guess. We're getting started. Yeah. Thank you. Um, I think we have it down on Saturday. I think down. Oh, I see. You're definitely. You're. I'm sure. We're on the other side of it. Yeah. I don't know. You didn't check the phone off. You didn't. Yeah. Let me see. I know what that always means. You know, hearing what I did. But. I think. You know. Um.
Um, we did get the window fixed.
Oh, yeah.
Food pantry. Have that bill, so I will bill. The. Six hundred and eighty-five dollars. So it was under our. Deductible. Again, again, yeah. Um, food pantry said they would pay for half of it. So I will bill that. Um. With Sarah leaving. I was already struggling to figure out, um. Institute, the training that I went to last year is. First week of May, the first full week. That Friday. Sarah was going to be off. Stacy wasn't going to be able to work and I would have been at. Institutes and the office would have had to have been closed. Um, with Sharon now gone, I'm not going.
What, what? What days do you need someone?
We'd need the whole week. Just institutes the whole week.
Six thousand one hundred and one.
Um, I think. We haven't. Yeah, we haven't talked about how many of the days. I just figured it's easier. Plus, it's hard to get a room. I've been jumping through, I was trying to see if. We could get a room, I could get a room and so. Unfortunately.
Yeah.
I think we're going to have to pass this.
I did. That's more institution they come in for a happy day or something. You can. That is the. You know.
Yeah. Yeah, so. So there's that, um. We did get the money for the growth policy, that grant. We got those funds. Got that. I think there's just a few things that we have to. Finish up for their finalized report. To them. Yeah.
We're prepared for that. And that's.
Yes. Um, yeah, I was gonna say, I think that's something we're gonna have to talk about. And thank you for reminding me, because I keep forgetting all. Um, so, yeah, we did get a quote for the air conditioning unit for, um. The police department upstairs. That one's, was how many years old? Six. Six. Yeah, not working. Surprise. And. Yes, yeah.
Really?
We had enough to, we could cover it.
Really? It should be.
Horrible. Yeah, I mean. Yeah.
Some.
Yeah, I'll have to, I know I looked at it, the numbers that day and I was like, okay, we should be able to cover that, but. Cause I think it was, was it fifteen, sixteen? Yeah.
It makes sense. What you said.
Yes, the whole.
I'm worried.
I don't remember.
Being. You want. Yeah.
Yeah.